Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the March 25 Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. My first request is if you have a pager or cellphone, if you would silence or turn those off at this time, we would appreciate it. If you are not the applicant and you are here to address us on a case, we would ask that you sign up on a sheet like this, they're available on the table outside the chambers, and give them to our secretary. We're happy to hear you. And with that, we'll get right down to business, which is approval of the March 11 minutes.
No approval.
Have a motion second to approve the minutes, cast your votes, and that's approved, although Mr. Gales isn't here. Thank you. And the next is continuance requests. Russell?
We have two uncontested requests for continuances, Items 12, which is PUD 1412, and Item 13, C 6129. Item 12 is to defer until April the 22nd, and Item 13 defer until indefinitely.
Did anyone come to talk to us about either Item 12 or 13 on our agenda today? Motion for the continuances?
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the continuances, cast your votes, and they are approved. Now, we have other continuance requests?
We have two new requests for continuance. Item 7, which is SPOUD 552, request to defer until April the 8th. And Item 10, which is C 6203, request to defer until April the 22nd.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm here for SPOUD 552.
Okay.
That number seven?
Yes. We're going to continue it, but she would like to be heard since she's here, I was told, so we will. Okay? You'd like to, sir?
SPOUD 552.
Yes, it's going to be continued. It's going to be continued. The applicant's not here. Ms. Peters, we'll hear from you right now if you want to.
Thank you very much for your time.
Give us your name and address for the record, please.
6205 Northwest 77th. I'm here as a representative of the homeowner and also as a representative of Senator Constance Johnson's office. And I passed out these pieces of paper with some bullet points on it, and I'll kind of skip over the first point because it's obvious that nobody wants a canopy of gas station lights shining in their backyard. And I'll go ahead and get down to the safety concerns that I have that's going on with this intersection. Thank you for putting that up there. That'll make my job a lot easier. At Northwest Highway and Willshire, which is already a congested intersection, a person heading west onto Willshire will go about 10 to 15 yards, and you will come upon, well, it's a three-way stop, but it's actually a four-way intersection.
Ms. Peters, let me stop you just for a second.
Yes.
First issue is, do you contest the continuance? I mean, the applicant's not here, so I mean, we're obviously not going to hear the case today.
Okay. Well, my problem is, is, you know, I've taken a whole afternoon off work, and continually to keep coming down here, you know, affects me economically. And so, I was told by somebody that, you know, I could probably talk or, you know, present my case, but, you know, if I have to come back, the next time I will.
I don't want to make you have to come back. If you can just give us fairly briefly what your concerns are, we'll retain this paperwork until we hear the case.
Okay. So, that's what I'm going to do. All right. This intersection, this intersection going into my housing addition is pretty maniacal already, all right? You've got people going, you know, the people heading west don't have a stop sign, they have the right of way, but the people heading east do, and it's very confusing. They tend to run the stop signs, and then you have the access road and people coming out of the intersection, and it's just, it's very, very maniacal. So, the people coming west tend to slow down and bottlenecks all the way out into Northwest Expressway. Now, to compound this problem, they're four-laning everything. You know, they're having an expansion project there. So, I don't know what's going to be happening with that at that time. They're going to be adding sidewalks and pedestrian walks, bicycle trails, and, you know, my thing is, is that this gas station with the kind of volume that it does will just only add to the congestion and to the mania of that intersection already and the safety of it. I'm not saying that people shouldn't be allowed to develop that property. I'm just asking that maybe they do something, office building or something, something that's a little bit, you know, not so high volume and not 24 hours a day. You know, we have a gas station right across the street, Valero. We have a gas station just 100 yards west, the express, and then we have a 7-Eleven, which is about a quarter mile away down. So, it's not really an economic necessity for this gas station to be built there, and I think that it's going to create a lot more confusion and so forth at that intersection. And my question is, is how will we know and how do we find out how you make your recommendations to the city council?
Well, a couple of ways. One, they're published in the newspaper, although I noted last week, not always accurately. And it's also on the city's website, I think, is it not?
Okay. Well, I appreciate your time, and I urge the Planning Commission to deny this request and to consider perhaps developing something else there at that site. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
For your time.
Yes.
We have two items to be continued, Commissioners 7 and 10. Action.
Move continuance, as read.
As read, okay. Cast your votes, and the continuances are approved.
Chairman, on this issue of the continuances that aren't on the agenda that we get, but, JJ, and I love that, the emails, you know, the client has requested continuances. This is an issue that you've brought up many times, is that, is it fair for people who aren't on the email list about the continuances to come down, ready to do whatever they do, like this young woman? And what I do, which I think is what most people do, when I get the email, like that's continued, I take it out of my packet and dump it. It's, I don't have that in front of me because I assume continuance is a continuance, but it's not something that the public knows. Is it something that we should do?
Well, I generally ask the staff if they've notified protesters, and they do notify the ones that they know how to reach. So, I think, I mean, there's an effort made to do that, whether you can always reach...
I think that was my question.
Yeah, whether you can always reach everyone who might, in fact, want to protest, may not be practical, but the effort, the effort's made.
Yeah, a lot of it's last minute as well.
Oh, I know. Yeah. And I have to say that whenever one of those comes across my email at the last moment, I give a big smile and dump it.
Well, I hang on to it till we vote, but, you know, because you don't always approve them.
But I just think we need to be careful. I mean, you know, because people do take off from work and they do come down here, and as much as we can, you know, it's not perfunctory. I think we need to really consider that.
Well, and Item 10, which is another one with Protest Day, was continued by Commissioner Irwin, and he had been talking to both sides of that application and urging them to get together and see if they couldn't come to some accommodation before we heard it. So, that's the purpose for the other continuance today.
Is the continuance on the 8th of 22nd?
8th.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I agree with Commissioner Bright, and I have, I do have sort of an issue with a continuance like this one, that is not an uncontested continuance, but the applicant's not here. So, you know, in some ways, they're sort of saying, you know, "You have to continue me whether you like it or not because I'm not showing up." And I, that bothers me a little bit. Other people take the time to come down and be here and appear, and I think it is our choice to make whether we continue it or not, and the applicant needs to be here unless they have an uncontested continuance.
No disagreement with that. We can't hear you unless you're at the microphone.
For the record, I would contest it then. If you would, if you have a, if it's contested and you want to proceed with the hearing, then for the record, I would contest it.
We've already voted today.
Yeah. Additionally, there are other protesters that were on this case that are not here, so, but I know of.
And we do have a policy of not hearing cases if the applicant's not present. And then that's sort of my point, is that that is sort of being used against us, sort of taken advantage of, or however you want to say it. You know, we don't hear cases if the applicant's not here, so, but that's not exactly the same thing as an uncontested continuance, so, that bothers me.
And we have taken action if someone has repeatedly not appeared. We've actually making, taken decisions, and the general decision has been to deny it, but I think we do need to think about how we handle these. And if someone calls in and there the applicant says, "I'd like to ask for continuance at the last minute, they need to be here and tell us why," and then we take action up or down. And that needs to be communicated to applicants. I apologize to you, in this case, we did not know they wouldn't be here until we got here, so.
And we do appreciate the time and effort that it takes for people to come down here and appear in front of us, you know, and, you know, make their voices heard, and we want to include everybody in the debate, so I think it needs to be done in a way that is respectful of all concerned.
And we will take into consideration your comments when we hear the case, if you're not able to come back. So, we will do that. Okay. Are there any other continuance requests from the public? That's my next question. Hearing done, we'll go to the agenda.
We have two items on the consent docket. The first is an initiation by the Planning Commission of an application to rezone 849 Southwest 104th Street from C 3 to SPOUD 402. And the second is to initiate an ordinance amendment related zoning and planning affecting 23rd Street Uptown Corridor Overload District.
Is anyone here who want to address us on Items 1 or 2 today on our docket?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll move the consent. I do have a quick question on number 1. Why are we initiating this as opposed to the normal course?
As I understand, JJ can explain it better, but the owner of the property had agreed to a tenant rezoning the property at some point in the past to a use that is not now compatible with his desire for the property.
Thank you.
So, he kind of got a little hoodwinked, I guess.
Okay, action.
I move approval.
Have a motion and second to approve the consent docket, cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item 3 is DA 22952. It's an application by Earl Bridwell to obtain a lot split deed approval on property located at 945 Southwest 119th Street, Ward 5.
Commissioners, this is a request for variance. No one has signed up. Sir?
I'm Earl Bridwell.
Okay.
I'm the one that requested a lot split. I have a car wash.
Would you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Earl Bridwell.
Address?
12409 Lowering Way.
Thank you.
Oklahoma City. I requested this lot split because I've got a potential buyer for the car wash, and my wife says I need to quit washing cars. Coming June, it'd be 43 years. I've been continuously in the car wash business.
I've been washing cars that long too, but it's been mine.
Well, hopefully, I've been washing other people's. So, I'm, I request that, you know, I be approved so I can sell the car wash.
Okay. Again, no one has signed up, Commissioners, I don't. Motion for approve the variance?
I've got a couple of comments on this that I'm surprised that nobody's shown up because I've gotten some letters in my packet on this. Is that right? And those...
We haven't, I haven't.
Well, there's a letter here, and this letter, this dated, this is from Jennifer Sweetin, and another one from Douglas and Florence Wade, both of whom are making statements that when you split the lot, the area to the north is going to be many storage.
Let me address that. I come by and picked up the Sweetins' letter, I had concern. I went by and visited with them. I told them, "This is only for a lot split. All this request is for, it's not for a many storage." And she thought we was done to build a many storage while we wanted to split the lot. I told her I wanted to sell the car wash, and she's, they was really, after I talked to them, they, they was, you know, pretty, their concern was over the many storage. I told them I didn't have any plans whatsoever at this point to build a many storage. It's only to split the lot so I can sell it, and they, they seem to be...
But it's already got, it's got zoning, Bob. It's zone C 3, community commercial.
I understand. However, you know, if you don't split the lot, then, you know, my concern is, is that it's already zoned C 3, and we come in with a lot split, and that's it. What I would have preferred, I don't know if this is appropriate, but I'd like to have seen an SPOUD with certain controls because this is adjacent to a neighborhood. I mean, anytime I think that you can capture something and put controls on it to protect the neighborhood, these people, I don't know where they got, Mr. Bridwell, the idea that there's going to be many storage, but I think that you could see what their concern would be. This is a straight C 3 zoned area.
Well, I might say, I've been in the many storage business for about 25 years, and I do join residential houses, and I've never had one complaint from any resident joining me come up and say, "Well, you know, it's too much noise." Most of them's really happy because there's nothing going on in many storage. The volume is so large.
95% of the time, there's nothing going on.
Yeah.
But what we do have, Mr. Bridwell, in the Planning Commission, is a policy on how many storage units are built and lighting, I mean, all sorts of other controls. Under a PUD or SPOUD, isn't that right? That's, isn't that where our policies would apply?
Well, where we can apply conditions, yes, but he's not asking to rezone this, and we can't compel him to rezone it.
Well, I understand. I mean, I'm just raising the issue that anytime that you can capture something to provide protection for neighborhoods, I'm interested in doing that, not that I'm going to go to distance.
Well, I can say there's no plans whatsoever. It's only an acre and a half. Most many storages take at least five acres. This wouldn't even be big enough for a many storage. It's just too little practically. I wrote it down on my application, and I shouldn't ever put it down there. It's probably where it come in at. And I was thinking, "Well, this won't cause any traffic hardly, and it might work here because it'd be so little," but I'd have no plans whatever at this point to ever build on it.
But there's no plans at all for...
No plans at all.
...for doing anything, right?
There ain't nothing there, right.
Okay.
All I want, all I'm interested in is selling my car wash.
Any other comments, Commissioners?
I want to just to clarify that you don't know what you're going to do with the other piece of property?
None at all. I mean, I hadn't done anything with the home. It's not nothing. All right.
Mr. Bridwell, you need to be at the microphone because otherwise someone watching this later won't have any idea what you're...
I have noticed some of my neighbors, they put a gate in their fence so their kids could go out on this area and play. It didn't bother me. I let them play. I never said anything about stopping, but they, at the back of some of those houses, there's a fence, I know there's one or two gates where their kids can go out and play out there behind, ride their four-wheelers and everything. I've never said one word to them about stopping it. I didn't want, the kids are having fun, so it ain't a big deal.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question of the staff. I see where they're having the access easement is also a part of this application, but when you get ready to build on it, don't you have to have so much frontage on a street, or will this be a drive? How will they build something on this, this northern portion of the property with just a driveway without any road frontage?
Well, we got the question.
JJ?
The frontage and lot width are both included in the variance request.
How much, how much, how much frontage is required to be able to build on the, the north portion?
I believe it's 50 feet.
And they have, this easement is 50 feet?
How wide is your easement?
We have a 22-foot easement, but going into the area, we have a 50-foot easement. Going into the, or the approaches, going back there, it's 50 foot wide.
So, the frontage is 50 feet, and it narrows to a drive of 22 feet, is what he's saying.
So, you're saying that widening that approach satisfies that requirement?
Well, I think it would. It's 50 foot wide.
It's in the variance though, isn't it? It's in the variance.
It's in the, it's in the variance. He'll have an easement wide enough for a two-way access drive.
Okay. So, if we grant the variance, he's got what you're asking for.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm here. I'll hold on to this desk.
Okay, Commissioners, any other comments or questions of Mr. Bridwell? Janice?
No.
Oh, well, you just had that look. I'll go ahead and move the variance. Have a motion and second to approve the variance, cast your votes. Thank you. Now, do we need another motion, or is that all we need? So, there's only a motion? Approve the, okay.
And I'll make a motion, move Item 3 to the lot split.
Have a motion and second to approve the lot split, cast your votes, and you're approved, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item 4 is CE 780, an application by Old Shorty Life Insurance to close 50-foot public highway easement, Ward 7.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name's Dennis Box. Dale Phillips is also here on behalf of the owner, and as the owner and as the representative for Dale, we would request that you approve this application. There's construction underway and planned for future development, and this will allow it to happen. Departments have been notified, ODOT has no objection, and so we'd ask your approval.
Commissioners, no one signed up?
I move approval of the application.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve Item 4, cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 5 is SPOUD 551, an application by Christ the King Church to rezone 8300 Greystone Avenue from our one single family to SPOUD 551, Ward 8.
Mr. Chairman, while they're coming up, this is a Ward 8 case, it also happens to be my church, so I'm not going to participate in this. I would tell you that I haven't had any contact from anyone pressing any, any problem with the application or any protest.
Okay. Mr. Box?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, Dennis Box on behalf of the applicant. Phil Fitzgerald, who's the architect for this project, is also here. Dick Coyle is here. We have Michael Hoffner, the next generation for traffic engineering consultants, if you all have any questions regarding to traffic. But this is an application that provides an opportunity really for Christ the King to consolidate their campus for the next approximately year. The Presbyterian congregation will continue to operate within the existing building, and the plans that you've been provided are sketch plans only. We don't have specific plans for what will happen when the buildings are removed, but we do know that this will provide an opportunity for us to consolidate the campus, and it will provide an opportunity for us to have preschool, church activities, and also at some point, although it's probably 50/50, you could have sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Now, if we did have sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, we would have no problem in placing a condition upon this application that we would have to have access back to the parking lot that's shown up on your site plan because that's where they'd be picked up. With regard to traffic, I think it's important to know what is going on in the area because we've got Christ the King, we've got West Nichols Hills to the north, and then we have this facility, which has not only been a church but a preschool for a number of years. So, with that, I'm going to hold up an exhibit and have Phil, if the commission would allow me, to show what we're going to do in regard to queuing, to take care of any parking issues and the traffic issues.
Well, my name is Phil Fitzgerald. I'm the architect for Christ the King Catholic Church, and we've been asked to help develop the SPOUD for approval today and also discuss some very preliminary thoughts about the SPOUD. Christ the King is currently going to consolidate Little Red's preschool with the Christ the King Elementary School, of which most of the children go to the elementary school additionally anyway. So, what we do, we had the opportunity to combine the campus, consolidate parking, consolidate the children to the school, and I think make an overall improvement to the community. One thing that we've, we've been working on is we have a queuing issue with, with parking along Guilford. We are now going to take our existing parking lot and going to develop queuing on that parking lot so we can get approximately 50 cars off the streets and help, and further help the, any parking situations that we might have. We have, currently have a queuing situation on the south side, and so with these two areas of queuing, we should take care of any traffic issues. We also have, again, TEC here to answer any questions about traffic. The preliminary plan that you've seen is very preliminary in nature. There's been no programming from the school about the classrooms or what's going to happen, so, but staff asked for us to take a look at it and see how it could possibly work. So, the plan that you have shows that we've, we've added about 43 to 45 parking spaces to the site. The proposal for the area is about the same size of the existing building, and of course, we'll accommodate all of the city's own zoning requests and building code requirements.
Dennis or Phil, can you commit in the SPOUD to having those two queuing areas, one on what I'll call the northeast side of the facility on Guilford and another on the southwest side? That will definitely be part of what you do?
We, Mr. Chairman, yes, we can commit to that, and we can also commit to the, what I discussed at the very first, that being if it's actually developed at a future date with sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, then we'll make sure that connection between this site and the parking lot takes place so they, the students can walk to the parking lot.
With the two different queuing areas and different ages of the youngsters who are being dropped off and picked up at those two different locations, do they occur at the same time, morning and afternoon, or is there a time offset to that?
Currently, there's, there's a little bit of an offset in time with those areas. We also understand there could be a request that, and we'd agree to, working with West Nichols Hills to offset our queuing times or times from letting school out also.
Well, our traffic management people have raised the same issue, that those pickup and drop-off times, even if it's only 15 or 20 minutes separate, would relieve congestion in and around the campus and the church.
So, we can agree, yeah? We could agree to a additional TE that would provide for that. In, in discussion of the TEs, the only, when we look at the second TE that you all have in the staff report, it's based on the site plan, keeping in mind the site plan really is conceptual only, and it is, we would ask that the side yard, which really deals with the property adjacent to our own campus, be allowed to be 15 feet. That's what our intent was all along, and the conceptual plan that you all have, it's, it's not to scale, so that was our intent.
I should ask, is there anyone here today who came to discuss this case with us who's not in support of it? Are there any protesters here? Okay. Commissioners, comments, questions, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, with, with the agreements that were just stated by Mr. Box and Phil about division of time, and particularly... about division of time, and particularly the condition in the S P U D, that if there's a seventh and eighth grade school, then ingress, egress is out of that north, or the south end of the campus to that one parking lot. I met with them, and, and I think that their plan, well, it is going to make the neighborhood congested, but it's congested on Sunday morning, it's congested on Wednesday night, and et cetera. And there's no protest from many of the neighbors about what's being proposed, is that I'll move in favor of the application.
Second. We have a motion and a second to-
As amended, as-
Approve item five as conditioned.
Yeah.
Make that 20 minutes for me in TE three.
Yeah.
Cast your votes, and you're approved.
Item six is V2-5725, a request by Larry Maddox for a variance to receive a certificate of occupancy prior to completion of required public improvements and dedication and acceptance by council of those improvements at 8701 Northwest 157th Way in Ward 8.
Is the applicant present? Well, we'll kick number six to the heel of the docket and see if Mr. Maddox appears.
Item seven has been continued to April the 8th. Item eight-
I'm going to suggest that we take nine first, which is the rezoning, and then eight, which is the preliminary plat.
Go ahead.
Yeah?
I was wanting to continue.
I'm sorry?
You do?
Tell me why.
No, no, no. Your way.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right, we gotta do-
We're okay with dealing with preliminary plat as long as we can assume that the pod was approved as is.
That's why we're going to do the zoning first.
Okay.
All right, so I- Nice try, Dennis.
The wise to your ways, Dennis. Item nine is P U D 1403, which is an application by West Point Developers to rezone 11448 Southwest 44th Street from AA Agricultural to, to P U D 1403.
Mr. Chairman, Dennis Box and Kendall Dillon were here on behalf of the applicant. This is a case that sits on a state highway. It's been continued several times. There has been a number of questions raised by you all as a commission, and what we would like to do is discuss what we have proposed, and then get your input and go from there. Number one, when you deal with the first technical evaluation, it talks about taking out some additional uses. We think that pawn shops probably are not appropriate, and we agreed to take that use out of our application. If the application-
That's it, Dennis? Pawn shops?
Yes, sir.
One?
One.
We're down to 30 now?
We're down to 30. But this is state highway. I mean, I, the only reason, and Kendall and I actually represented the applicants to the north and east, and that was a, a planned unit of development that had 12 uses, they knew what they wanted to do, and so they had it clearly in mind, the uses that worked. If there's ever a place that, if you looked at straight zoning, you would look at all the uses being allowed, it'd probably be on a state highway. So we would hope that you would consider that. With regard to this application, it's an application that deals with commercial on the frontage. We have R4 adjacent to that, and then the preliminary plat that you all will consider after this is for residential. There, I know, are issues that we'll deal with, signs. And we might as well start there, and, and we would have no objection to having one sign that was 15 feet and one sign that was 12, and the other signs would be 8 feet. Now, when you consider location, I think that's appropriate. On the northeast corner, we did one sign that was 15, and either one or two signs were 12. So this is consistent with, with that zoning. And even though it's flat out there, as Commissioner Irwin pointed out to him, you do have kind of a, a little bit of a hill out there, and so we want to make sure that people can get to our location, and it is successful. With regard to the other technical evaluations, we, and my, my client is here, and he does several commercial developments. His concern on the 70-30 is that it's kind of, from his position, kind of 1980s look, but if that's very important to this commission, he'll live with it. He'd like to have a 60-40, which allows more of a split if he goes with a little higher building on your brick, stone, and then Eiffel or Stucco. We've talked about signs.
What decade does that get us into, Dennis?
2011. We're, we're planning for the, just like a P U D, we're planning for the future.
So 10% jumps us 30 years.
Well, it's all a matter of taste. That, you know, that's, that's a very good point. I, I, I think that we want to make sure we don't have clapboard and retail facilities that are not quality in nature.
We took care of that. We just went to 100%. No clapboard?
Huh?
No clapboard?
Yeah. I mean, obviously, we, we wouldn't want to do that. It'd be inappropriate and not right. Keep in mind, if I say 60-40, you all have the right to review this when we come back. I have no objection to you saying in a TE, if 60-40 doesn't look appropriate to you, and therefore you come back and demand 70-30, we'll live with it. But I think what you're going to see when we come back with our commercial center, you're going to like it. But I leave that to you all. That would give you the option of, of not saying you are restricted by 60-40.
Then the P U D says 60%, and you say, well, it says 60, we're not going to give you 70. I'd rather do it the other way and say, well, if you come in with a design that looks really good at 60%, and the P U D says 70, we can amend it.
That, that, that language would be fine with us. I mean, you're going to have the opportunity to review it anyway, and that way the baseline is your 70-30, but if we can show you something that does take-
My baseline is 60, it's harder to get to 70 than if it's 70 and we get to 60.
I think, I think it's a point well taken.
Okay.
And we would agree to that. And we agree to technical evaluation number five. So with that said, there's been some discussion about curb cuts, and so the question is, how many is too many? And we, we think, we've asked for five, and we would, we would agree that track one stays intact, and the configuration it is, we could go down to three.
Commissioners, discussion? Nick, anything?
Buck?
No, I think the curb cut issue was probably the biggest issue we had. I'm happy with that.
Okay. What about signs? Everyone comfortable with one at 15, one at 12, and the remaining at 8?
The 15 is going to be on the corner, the big on the corner, and the small down must, the middle down Mustang, and the other one on 44?
Yes, sir.
Kind of located at the ends?
Yes, sir.
At the, as anchors type things. Is that what you're thinking?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll give it to Commissioner Bright now, and you can debate signs.
Bob can referee the rest of it, and I've cleared that.
I've got, I have really several issues that I've discussed with Kendall on this application. And the first one has to do with the extent of the C3 zoning going down the street. Admittedly, this is quote, "a highway," I mean, and it is a highway, but you have 13, according to the application here, 13 acres of C3. That's what it says on the, on the very front. Your map shows 11.01, but the application or the staff report says-
We'd agree to reduce it.
12.98.
We'd agree to reduce it to 11.01.
And then what, is there a line?
It's a line that you see here.
Huh?
I was being facetious. That, that mine, that's what, that's accurate right here, 11.01 acres.
That's 11.01?
Yes, sir.
Well, the, the point being is that what we've been told to do as the Planning Commissioners is to constrict the commercial activity to the intersection and not let it go down the road. And so I think that there needs to be a buffer between the residential that we'll consider in the, in the next application and the C3 that you have designated for the 11.1 acres. I think there needs to be an O2 buffer in that part next to the residential area.
We've got, now keep in mind, when you, when you take this application and the next one, the property to the south, we own, so-
I understand.
We, we're-
But that's where you're going to build houses.
That's right, and that's our buffer. I mean, we, we feel very comfortable that we will have the houses, and then we'll have commercial, and then we'll have R4.
Okay, second, I mean, these are my objections. You're so far not agreeing with the first one, so-
I'm assuming-
Now we'll get to the signs.
We'll agree to disagree.
As you've said, this is flat land, and this land out there is goat pasture. There's, there's nothing there. This will be the commercial part, a destination place for people to come from all sorts of places. Nobody in their right mind can miss a sign, a monument sign eight foot, that describe, you want two, three of those, four of them, that's fine. You can't miss them. You do not at all need a 15-foot monument sign, because people are going to know that this is there. Communities across the land function beautifully. People do business with monument signs eight feet tall, and I would, I would object to this, because you don't need it, there's no sign competition, nobody in the world will miss what it is that you're trying to advertise with an eight-foot sign, and there's no reason to continue to establish a precedent of going up the sky with a sign so that airplanes can see it. While 15-foot isn't, 15-foot is twice as tall as an eight-foot monument sign. I think it's intrusive. I don't think it's necessary in this application, because there's, there's nothing, there's nothing at all around. There's zero. So that's my objection on the sign size. Third is that you said three entrances off of-
We have five, provided for now, and we could agree to take two of those out and limit it to three.
And have three. I, you know, I think, I don't know.
You have, look at how much frontage we have.
Oh, no, no. It's a matter of the traffic going down the street-
23.
Coming in and coming out. It's, it's the traffic. It's a state highway, and you have three ingress, egresses and slow down. That'd be, I, that'd be the, you know, a consideration for how you control that and the fewer places to come in and out of. It seems to me that that's better.
Fair question. Do you, are you saying three is too many?
What?
Are you saying that three is too many?
It might be.
Well, I-
I mean, but five is way too many.
What's your distance down, Dennis, north to south down Mustang?
It-
I couldn't tell.
Yeah, the total distance is 1,423 feet, 28 inches. And if I'm-
And you want, how many entrances along Mustang, just so I'm clear?
Three.
You want three on Mustang and then two on 44?
Two on 44.
That's correct.
So that would give them about 400 feet of separation per drive on Mustang Road. Is that about, I mean, more or less?
Which is more restrictive than you're going to see in-
Kind of equidistant.
98% of your P U D cases.
That's it.
Well, don't know. But you'll, you all will have the opportunity to review that when we come back with our site-specific plans.
What's the speed limit on Mustang out there?
55.
55? On, at that, that was your point we were talking about earlier ago?
Yes.
Yes.
We are going to want these reasonably equally spaced, so when you come back-
Right.
Understand if you try and cluster them, that that's not going to be well received.
Right. And, and that's the good news about the new P U D policy that you all have. When we come with a specific site plan, you'll be able to see that and make sure you're comfortable.
Right.
But I, I, I just have to respectfully disagree. I think three is, is the minimum and very appropriate. In regard to signs, I, I just don't see that 15 feet on one sign on the corner is a huge distraction for planes or anything else. So we, I mean, I, I think that's appropriate.
I don't want to, I'm not meaning to negotiate, you know, because that's my opinion about the hype of signs that this city has had, and when you have a clear pasture with no sign competition whatsoever, the rest of the world that designs and develops commercial areas that are pretty to look at, they don't have 15-foot signs. They are, they are not available. They're not available in Edmund. They're not available in La Jolla. They're not available in Lovett, Texas. They're not available. And somehow commerce and industry functions just beautifully, and if you have the opportunity in this place to lower it, nobody's going to miss your business.
And we have lowered it. I mean-
No, no, no. I'm talking about the TE, eight-foot monument signs.
Well, I mean, the staff put eight foot, but 15, 12, and eight is lowering from what typical C3 commercial would allow.
I understand.
Okay.
And that's my objection.
Yeah.
What are the, it, across the street is P U D 1384. What are your, do you know what their signage is?
It's 115, 112, and a 10. A 15, a 12, and a 10.
And that's roughly the same size tract of land? Is that, I mean, it's 12.98, it's about 13 acres, right?
Little difference, but I'm going to let Kendall explain that. He did the-
Okay, good, good. Just so I-
Yeah, and I'm, I'm trying to recall some of it from memory, but specifically-
Understood.
On Mustang Road alone, on the frontage, and it's, it actually sits on the northeast corner, but it's a 15, a 12, and a 10 on Mustang Road, and then if I recall correctly, there's two more signs on 44th, and one of those is an eight and a 10. I'm confident, I'm pretty confident about the ones on Mustang. I know there's at least one sign on 44th that's in.
Thanks.
Other discussion, Commissioners? Action, a motion? Not E-motion, A-motion?
I'll move to approve.
We, we need to make a couple of conditions. One, we're-
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
The 70-30 is one condition.
Changing the curb cuts from five to three on Mustang Road.
Three curb cuts from five, and then the question of what to do about the signs.
Right.
And I say what to do about the signs, because I'm waiting for consensus.
What do you want? You want to throw something out there, Buck? Or what he, what Dennis said?
I mean, I, I'm not crazy about 15-foot signs either, but that, but they're out there. I see them now on Mustang Road. But if we can limit it to, I don't know what, I don't know what the normal-
Well, he's offering one at the 15 feet, one at 12, and the remaining signs at 8. Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I'm sorry, did you say the remaining signs, as in plural?
There's three.
I thought, I thought the offer was-
Well, there's some-
One, one, one.
Sign or two on 44th Street, too, which runs east-west. Is that not right, Dennis?
That's right. You have a, you have a monument sign going into the neighborhood.
I would expect that.
You have, my understanding is three signs. You have a 15 on the corner, a 12 down in the southeast corner along Mustang Road, and then the 8 up on southwest- in the southeast corner along Mustang Road, and then the eight up on southwest 44th in the northwest corner. That, where I'm talking about?
What sign? That's it.
Just those three signs.
This is the.
I, I understood, my understanding of what the request is, is a 15-foot sign on the corner of southwest 44th and Mustang, 15-foot monument sign, and then down here in the southeast corner along Mustang Road there, right about where it says South Mustang Road, you'd have a 12-foot monument sign, and then in the northwest corner, right about where the T is on 44th Street, I'm rough cuff.
Right.
You'll have your eight-foot monument sign, and those will be the three signs. I mean, the locations of them are going to vary a little bit, I understand, but, but there's three, that I understood.
I prefer putting the eight-foot along Mustang Road if possible, basically all the signs would be along Mustang Road.
How many signs along Mustang Road and how tall?
Yeah.
You know, the way I understood it, Dennis.
I got one at 15, one at 12.
We had three on Mustang Road at eight, 12, and 15, and one on 44th for the neighborhood, is that right?
Yeah, my client just, just corrected me and said he's, he is agreeable to no signs on 44th, and so we'll have those three signs on Mustang.
Okay. All right, to that, now we, now we have a.
Three signs on Mustang Road.
Complete.
No signs on 44th.
Right.
That's a 12, eight.
15, and a 12, and a eight.
And we're leaving TE3 like it is, right?
Yes.
And the rest of the TEs are like, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we, Dennis, you're, you're clear on the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item eight, or nine, excuse me, as condition, cast your votes, and it is approved. Item eight is C6178, which is a preliminary plat of Mustang Park in Ward III.
Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll Sparks, representing the applicant, and we are in agreement with all of TEs except on TE number four, just for clarification purposes. I've read the, the, the policy, and I'll be honest, I'm still a little bit confused in terms of some of the things in there and exactly what is and is not required in terms of our garage fronts. So if you take a look at this, this layout, what we've done is we've taken a lot of measures to make a lot of curvilinear streets and those sort of things to kind of mitigate that from the start, and we will also agree to put the two trees in the front yard as we've done before. But I would like to delete that TE and not agree to a policy that I'm really still not exactly sure what I'm agreeing to adhere to.
Commissioner Hensley.
I'm just curious, Kendall, with respect to that, you, you seem to have gone partway down the path, which we're good. With regard to the trees, et cetera, would you, one of the options we, we spoke of with trees was street trees, move those out closer along the sidewalks, and, and we spent great, considerable time and effort visiting with the city departments with respect to that, and got some buy-in with, on those also, which also, in our view, as a committee, and a commission, has an ameliorating effect on the garage fronts, draws your attention into the street, makes a nice, pretty boulevard, much like Lincoln Boulevard just north of the Capitol.
So, so just for clarification purposes, when we're talking about street trees.
There is.
We're talking about inside the right-of-way or inside the front yard, or, help me with the definition of that.
Well, I think we're talking about inside the right-of-way between the curb and the sidewalk.
Okay, between, now, we've still got an issue, and this is part of the reason I'm having an issue agreeing to a policy, is because still today, I know you're working with your utilities department, when I want to have a water line, I've got to have 10-foot offset to my trees. Well, if you look at four foot behind the curb, I got 12-foot of right-of-way, the math doesn't work, and it's my understanding they're still adhering to that separation.
I don't know if that's the case, one. Two is, I think though that there's a specific grouping of trees that we've designated and that they have some, somewhat agreed to, and is going to allow for that planning in that right-of-way.
Okay, so there are certain species that they are going to permit within that 10-foot of right-of-way?
Well, that are approved by the commission.
Or within 10 feet?
Yeah.
And the, and the list is in the guidelines.
Yeah, they're in the guideline.
There's a list of trees in the guidelines.
There's a list of street trees in the guideline.
The policy I read did not have any species in it.
Yeah, no, they're, we're pretty sure they're there.
Okay.
But we're happy to provide those to you.
I, I mean, I'd like to have a copy of them, obviously.
Yeah.
So would it, is it still, in, in regards to the policy, is it two trees, but now instead of being in the front yard, if permitted, those are in the right-of-way?
We would like to, if we could get them in the right-of-way, we'd like to do that.
Plus, let me add something to what Commissioner Hensley is saying. Plus, the, if you look at the guidelines, we, we had some little graphic demonstrations of how you handle the garage situations, and all of the garages are not necessarily, some of the garages are facing the street, but it's just in the relationship of the front plane of the door of the house, so you can have them sit back some, or you can turn them, so it's not just to find all garages not facing the street. So you have some latitude if you look at the diagrams that we have provided within the study that we did, and I think it gives a very good development, even though your streets are curvilinear, curvilinear, that helps, but you just have garages curving opposed to straight. So we still would like to see those guidelines adhere to or are considered as you develop this, your subdivision, and just make it that much nicer with the streets curving, the street trees out in the area between the sidewalk and the curb.
Bearing setbacks, like James has said.
You know, and set back the garage so the cars don't cross over the sidewalks so people can pass and use the sidewalks. So if you look at those, I think you can really see that it's really not that restraining, but it would add to the, and it would enhance your development.
The point that we tried to do, which was, one, if I could say, was, that was, we worked deeply with the developers and engineers, and I, I know you know that, Kendall, was, to provide not necessarily rigid one tree, two tree, three trees, all in the street, all on the curves. The goal of the policy was to provide several different options to allow different aspects of the development and different aspects of the policy to provide this breakup that we were looking for from the uniform line of garage fronts, and also what had become somewhat the easy polit, somewhat the easy way of saying, well, we're just going to stick a two-inch caliper or one-and-a-half-inch caliper tree in the front yard and call it good. So it's less that we're saying, you know, Kendall, one, like I said, that in one of your earlier applications, this, so far as looking at it from a curvilinear designed streets, it's not the straight tur, streets, it's got some very nice aspects to it. I think that there are other aspects of the policy, though, as Commissioner Williams is pointing out, that allow additional flexibility to ameliorate the fact, this, this issue of garagefront. Am I going to say, gee, Kendall, you're not complying at all? No, I'm not going to say that. I think you're, I think you're making an effort, and this is one of the things that we certainly appreciate, and I think Commissioner Bright and Williams are both saying that thing, same point, too.
I agree with everything that Commissioner Hensley just said, and, and to emphasize that when we run this committee, that this policy is not mandatory.
Right.
We, you know, I just want to make that clear to you guys, that, that we've, you know, it's, if you don't, if you don't, if you just thumb your nose completely at it, we can't do a thing about it. I mean, that's really what you, but, but what we want you to do, and I'm surprised that you didn't, in the policy that you got, didn't get the list of the trees.
Yeah, we can fix that.
And this is what I think the encouragement is of developers, engineers, et cetera, is to really look at what we did and, and open your mind up to, rather than here's two trees in front, right in front of the garage and wherever it is, but go back, go into the, into the street and plant trees so that you do have a canopy effect. I mean, my neighborhood has that, I mean, it, you know, there were street trees planted in the 30s, the, the, all the public works and water, all those things you're worried about, we met with them, and they agreed. They, sure, you can do that, and that's what I really do want to encourage, engineers, architects, planners, developers, et cetera, to look at this policy and to say, well, rather than just cookie-cut the whole thing all the way like we've always done it, there's other ways of making this particular subdivision better. And I think that the work on the committee resulted in that with not just commissioners, but also, you know, it was composed of developers as well, and we all had this one kind of common agreement, as long as it's not dictated, you have to do this, and it's not, that you really have something to work with, and I, you know, so TE four, you can demonstrate how you've complied by saying, we didn't, you know, and we can't do a thing about it.
Curvilinear streets, we're going to, we're going to advocate these.
I've got the curvilinear streets, and I'm still willing to give you the two trees in the front yard even, and, and so, to me, when I look at the intent of the policy, I've met it. That being said, I don't know as, if the utilities department will let us take those two trees and move them to the right-of-way, I don't know that that's an issue, but what I'd like to do is, let's, I don't want to agree to adhere to a policy that I don't completely understand yet and have not looked at the trees. We've got the curvilinear streets, I will discuss it at the final plat at the utilities department, then we may very well at the final plat pull those trees out, but let's discuss that with the final plat.
May I make this suggestion? If you, if you agree to TE four, TE four says, with the final plat.
Right.
The applicant must demonstrate how the plat conforms with the policy. All we're asking you to, when you come back with the final plat, state in the document how you're doing it. You're doing it with curvilinear streets, and that's all I'm doing? I'm doing it with curvilinear streets with two trees, I'm using these trees, whatever you decide to do. I believe that's the.
I'm providing alternative setbacks, I'm providing.
That's the spirit of TE four. I think we're making more of this TE than, than it deserves at this point.
I agree. I mean, look, you're closer than you think.
And I'm not trying to make him out of a molehill.
Don't make it hard on yourself.
I'll agree to the TE, all I'm uncomfortable with is agreeing to a policy that I personally, when I read it, don't understand what it says.
Understand. We'll help you understand.
I'll agree to TE number four.
All right, we thought you might.
Before we go any further, Kendall, I want to make one change to TE number eight, and that is, I want to delete the last sentence. It says, "In the event the speed limit on Mustang Road is lowered to 45 miles per hour or less, the intersection may be reevaluated with the application pertinent to the final plat." My experience is that when we reduce the speed limits on roads that are designed for a different speed limit, in this case 55 miles an hour, changing the sign doesn't change the traffic, doesn't change the drivers, and what we've been doing in the city is, is creating unsafe conditions every time we go back and say, well, we need a site disis requirement now because we just dropped the speed limit 10 miles an hour. And I think we've been making a mistake along the way as we've done that, and I don't want to continue to do that.
I'll agree to that.
Thank you.
One other comment about the traffic study and the infrastructure that traffic has recommended, and, and this, I just want a vocal confirmation that, that this infrastructure, infrastructure cost, signalization, turning lanes, et cetera, will be paid by the developer.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion, commissioners, on item nine? Item eight, no, I'm sorry, I'm back, I'm going backwards. I know, thank you.
I'm moving through.
As, as everything amended.
As.
Right, just so I'm clear, they're going to.
TE four stays.
Stays the same.
And modifying eight.
And modifying eight by deleting the last sentence.
Right.
And that was the only amendments we had, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay, Kendall?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item eight as condition, cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you. Item 10 is being continued till April the 22nd. Item 11 is to adopt amendment to the OKC Plan, establishing a definition of goals and actions for transportation levels of service. You may recall, we had a presentation from Randy on this a couple of weeks ago. If you have any questions, he's here to answer those. Everybody have questions of Randy, or?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move adoption.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the amendment to the plan, item 11, cast your votes, that's approved. And. Item six. Item, item six, Mr. Maddox is not here.
No, what happened was he had to, on an emergency matter, take his mother to the hospital, so I'm going to ask that you look at the staff report and approve that the property owner is here, there have been no unfavorable, unfavorable conditions by staff, and this has been done before, this came about by an unfortunate situation in regard to a bonding and improvement, so we'd ask your approval.
I believe in the previous case that we did this, staff confirmed, and I would ask again, that the bond in place is adequate to make sure there is ultimate performance and they are progressing, is that correct?
I understood they were moving on the bond, is that right?
Bond has been called, and the bank is working with legal at this time.
No, I understand, but, but my point is that they are still progressing on, on doing that, and the bond itself, amount-wise, is adequate to, to see the improvements done.
Yes.
Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item six, cast your votes, and it's approved, thank you. Is that your case, Mr. Murphy? Okay, nice to see you. Planning Commission committees? Planning Commission members?
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is a committee or a member thing, and I didn't, I kept quiet while the discussion was about the specific case, because I don't want to jump on anybody in particular, but after all the time and effort and energy that went into the garage front, subcommittee's work, I, it bothers me a lot to hear somebody show up and say, I don't want to comply with this because I don't understand it. You know, what we heard over and over again from the industry people, engineers and developers and architects that attended those meetings, was that they didn't want to be dictated to, they didn't want a set of hard and fast rules, and the you must do this and you must do that, and it troubles me a great deal to hear somebody say now, well, you know, it's so vague, it's meaningless, or, you know, you can't understand what it says. If there is an issue with respect to this, this policy and how it is applied, then I would really like for staff to put some energy and attention into that, because I, I will not vote to waive it, and the time and energy that we spent coming to a decision about the policy that we have was extremely, I would say generous, flexible, fluid, and, you know, we did go and meet with the public works people, and we got their input, and to me, it's just, it's, it's not okay to, you know, just like, oh, but throw it all out the window, that's, that's not acceptable to me.
We did, and I agree with James, we did meet with public works, we met with fire, we met with traffic, so, and Marshes Group Utilities, yeah, waste managing, and so, I, I didn't, I, I realize that it's not concrete, it, that can be done, that's an option. And, but, but the agreement was, the agreement with, with respect of the participants in that effort, which was broad brush, was, let's have some guidelines that we can follow, that we can reasonably achieve with optionality, because one, the last thing we want to do in this market is discourage development and make it more difficult for the guys that are out there trying hard to do good quality development, and we can increase the quality. So enough said, I'll take an opportunity, I think, to visit with Kendall and maybe Dennis, and see what we can.
Curiosity, Mike, is whether, Kendall said he got the policy, that he got perhaps an incomplete.
Yeah, I think maybe, maybe that might be a good idea if, if, we ought to look back through, JJ, if you could send me a new copy? That'd be good, so, and Bob, and, so we can look at it at least to make sure that we got everything that we wanted to get. Because that, just so I'm clear, once again, if there's anything missing that we under, that we thought was there, maybe we should address, we should first address that. Okay. Okay.
Planning Department?
We are planning to have a study session on April the 8th at the next meeting.
Are there the agenda items, you know?
Relates to...
Besides lunch?
I don't know how long it will be yet, so, to get that confirmation from...
We could add items to the agenda.
Sorry?
We could add items to the agenda.
You could add items to the agenda, yes. You have until 3 o'clock to... No, you're more than welcome to add items to the agenda. That way you can get the lunch, yeah.
Is, is there something specific you have on my, in mind to have us address or talk about?
We want to discuss meetings that we've been having recently regarding...
Appearance standards.
Something like that, yeah.
And Randy, there's a meeting tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock, Appearance Standards and its connectivity and what else?
May we ensure the connectivity? Follow up on that.
Okay, Janice and Bob? Bob? Excuse me. Appearance Carter?
I was telling you, can this be? You're doing your job.
Development Services, Municipal Counselor. Motion to adjourn? And we're adjourned.